I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
In the acceptance of the agenda, I have one item I wanted to add tonight, and it is a follow-up to the equipment sharing agreement. Remember, we talked about the ICE grant, which is the Intertown Capital Equipment Grant, and there are some changes in the numbers. So I wanted to talk with you about that, and we will put that as number 11, Laura. And then appointments to boards and commissions will be 12, and so forth. And with that, I entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second. Did you get that, Laura? Who made the motion? Carl? Or Kathy seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is approval of minutes from the regular February 17, 2016 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Michael. Motion made by Carl. Any changes, errors, or omissions? There is one abstention. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? One abstention, six yeses. Under communications and correspondence tonight, I invited Amy Valencourt from Ty &amp; Bond, and Amy is here to give us a brief report on the Brownstone Avenue Brown Fields grant that the town has, and Ty &amp; Bond is doing for us. Would you please take the podium, Amy?
Okay, so I wasn't here too long ago telling you about our grand plan for going out and drilling, and we actually just completed that last week. And so I'm here to give you an update, describe what we did, give you, you know, just a brief synopsis of our findings, but we're still digesting the data. We started with a ground penetrating radar. What we were looking for were undiscovered utilities, maybe some remnant underground storage tanks, anything that would get in the way of our drilling, or maybe become an area of concern that, you know, we find through the ground penetrating radar. We did not identify any additional tanks. We did not really identify any issues that conflicted with our drilling, but we did locate the utilities and we marked them out. We advanced 42 soil borings, and we did a few hand auger borings out there. We did soil sampling, and we ended up analyzing 62 different soil samples for various constituents, based on whatever it was that the area of concern that we were looking at. For most of the areas of concern, it was really petroleum. But then we had a few other issues. We were looking for building demolition debris, fill material, things like that. We ended up installing 10 new groundwater monitoring wells out there. Plus, there was also a network of wells installed by a previous consultant, but they were only around the remnant bulk storage tanks. So we had to come closer to the garage, closer to the road. We were evaluating historic quarrying operations, and then we installed wells on the other two vacant properties, 230 and 222 Brownstone Ave. We ended up collecting samples from 17 different groundwater monitoring wells overall. So between the 42 borings and the 17 wells, even just for the Phase Two, we had good property coverage. That way, we're able to identify if there's a release. The next phase is to say, yes, there was a release, how much is there, and to put a number on it. That would be a Phase Three site assessment. So, in general, the findings, we did get a lot of petroleum hits, and it's no surprise. Big industrial history, large bulk storage petroleum tanks for a long time, Buckeye Pipeline cutting through the property, former tar and asphalt batching facility. So we knew that we were going and getting petroleum impacts. The significance of those, though, I was a little surprised about. I've done a number of petroleum facilities, and working on now something in Middletown on a former bulk storage petroleum facility. You typically find free product. We thought we would get free product because the previous consultant had to install the wells around those tanks because they had a release. But we did not encounter free product. And even in the wells, there were absorbent socks put in there to collect oil, and we pulled those out and we drummed them. And we were very careful when we were purging the wells. We ended up drumming all the water because we were being cautious. We didn't want to release it. We thought we were going to have petroleum. But we didn't have free product, so that's a big plus for this site. So we did find, in general, widespread petroleum impacts to surface soils in particular areas. But again, you know, nothing that is a release where product has accumulated and it's going to, from these preliminary results, where we're looking and saying, okay, you guys, you know, you're going to have bigger remediation here because we have free product floating on the groundwater, something like that. I have good feelings about the results that we have so far. One thing we are looking for, you know, the proposed development in the future, although you haven't settled on a particular development, and you're working through the process of planning, in general, our understanding is it's going to be, you know, commercial use. You're not going to want to build condos on here for residential. One of the things we look at is volatile organic compounds, because they create vapor intrusion when you start putting buildings on the site. We did not have issues with VOCs that would indicate, hey, we got to, you know, when we do development, we have to consider this, you know, there's a vapor intrusion issue. Again, another plus for the site. I will say that on one of the borings that we had on the 230 Brownstone Ave. property, there's still a slab there where old gasoline tanks used to sit on that property. One sample near that slab came back with PCBs. It's a low detection of PCBs, and the borings around that, within 20 feet, did not have detections of PCBs. So as I talked about, we go back for a Phase Three, and we're looking to delineate these impacts. We're going back to that area. We have to confirm it's just an anomaly. Now, in looking at the history of the property and what could be the source of PCB, you have stuff like fill material, you know, where did it come from? You know, they filled the old quarry. But because we didn't have that in any of the other 41 samples for the property, it doesn't look like it's the fill material. We look at things like building demolition debris, because PCBs is in paints and caux. We did not have building demolition debris material that we came across in this boring. So it could just be an anomaly, but it's one of the things we're investigating during the Phase Three to confirm that. So, in general, the groundwater monitoring wells were pretty good. We had some detections of, you know, low constituents of ETPH petroleum hydrocarbons, but we did not get a lot of the other constituents for gas, VOCs. We didn't get any heavy SBOCs. There were not metal issues per se, but these petroleum hydrocarbons that show up in the groundwater. And I'm surprised they weren't higher, being the, you know, industrial history of the property. One of the things that we did find that sent up a red flag for Ty &amp; Bond, in a sense, is that when we gave the proposal to Portland, and we've talked to the property owner about what the risks are going in, and if we find something, one of the caveats that we brought to everybody's attention is significant environmental hazard in Connecticut. If you meet the criteria for a significant environmental hazard, you have a requirement to report to the state. And there's a lot of variables involved in that. If it's soil, is it in the surface of the soil where you have people that can have a direct exposure issue? If it's in groundwater, are there wells nearby where this can get into somebody's well? Do you have an explosion hazard if it's gasoline, where you have to worry about the free product, what I discussed before? At this site, we did have significant environmental hazard for three compounds. For environmental consultants, these three compounds tend to be a nuisance sometimes when we go out and do sites, and I'll tell you why. The three particular compounds that we got are considered semi-volatile organic compounds, and they're very typical of pavement, of asphalt. It's a form of petroleum compound, and we find them everywhere. Anywhere there's fill material, and there's asphalt in the mix. We had an asphalt batching plant. I'll tell you why this triggered significant environmental hazard. Our standard in Connecticut for these compounds is one part per million. All you need is 30 times that. So if you have a 30 parts per million, you trigger the significant environmental hazard. There are more filings up at DEEP for this particular situation, because it happens everywhere. So my intent is to call Ken Feathers from DEEP, and I'm going to say, Ken, we got it again, on a site in Portland that was an asphalt batching plant. It's the same three compounds. The situation here is, yes, it's in the surface soil, top two feet, but the entire property's fenced. And the town, their plan is to investigate and remediate, right? So we don't want to have to file a significant environmental hazard for these three constituents. They give you an exemption from the significant environmental hazard if you do the removal within 90 days. I'm not going to go out there with a shovel to dig out these three borings when I know the plan going forward is to apply for cleanup funds, to do the remediation. So I don't want to put, you know, this site through any burden doing this, when I don't feel it's really a significant environmental hazard. It's fenced off. Nobody goes there. The access is super limited. I think I'm the only one that still has a key. So that was the one thing throughout this investigation where it came up, and I was like, oh, we almost had the golden jackpot, and we have this one issue with the same three compounds. So we are working through that. I'll keep you posted on how that works out. So the next step, we're producing the draft Phase Two report. I literally had the tables and figures hot off the press that I brought here tonight. But we'll be preparing a draft report that'll come to you folks. I'm sure you'll share it with the property owner, and then we'll have DECD and DEP look at it. While we're writing the draft report, we're already formulating our scope of work for the Phase Three. But, you know, it's pretty simple. You're just following the trail of data. So at the same time we're submitting the draft Phase Two, we plan on submitting the scope of work for the Phase Three. We'll do the Phase Three, and like I said, we'll go back to that PCB spot, and we'll do borings around it. And then I'm going to tell you exactly how much you have to take out to clean it up, and what it's going to cost. And we plan on doing that for every spot where we even got the petroleum impact. So at the end of the Phase Three, I'm coming back to you. Typically, we do three remedial scenarios. You know, we'll say you can dig it all out, this amount of money. You can dig out hot spots, cap some of it. There's a bunch of, you know, variables you can use depending on the ultimate reuse of the property. And what you plan, or, you know, propose to do with the property, there are a lot of avenues you can go with the remediation. So that's where we are. That's where we are in this project.
Open it up for questions from the selectmen.
Come on, Carl.
So what is the next step again? Like, what's the next?
The next step is for us to develop a scope of work to go in and delineate the impacts that we found.
And how long will that take?
Well, for development of the scope of work, you know, it's probably three to four weeks, because we're putting together the draft Phase Two report. I believe we gave you a pretty quick...
Yeah, I think it's, I think there is a schedule.
Yeah, we're jumping right into the Phase Three. Our goal really is to get you guys prepared for, if not the next round of DECD funding, but the round after that. You know, they're offering one in March. They'll accept the, they'll make the announcement in March. The applications are due in April.
That's now?
That's...
That's now?
It's coming up, yeah. In the next two weeks, they're going to make the announcement. They'll have another one come June or July. You know, if we're ready, and I've gone to them and applied for these funds without producing the Phase Three report. I don't need to produce the Phase Three report. I need to go to them and say, hey, here's the number, you know, here's the plan, here's the preferred remedial alternative, and here's what it's going to cost. And here's the excellent story behind this project, and it's a win-win situation for everybody. Otherwise, it will sit there in the condition it's in, and, you know, no developer's going to just jump in and take on environmental liability, which is why you got involved in the first place. Any others?
When you did the bores...
Yeah.
When you did first radar, does that show voids in the ground too?
It does. We were looking for, you know, what was this filled with? Okay. So looking at the historic pictures, going through the Phase One, and you know, I made a big poster of this project for Ty &amp; Bond's open house. And you see the guys and the harnesses on the quarry. It was deep. And I've worked these quarries before in other towns. Is there a bus, plane? Now, what did they fill it with? I got to know. That was part of the GPR. So no, we didn't find that. We didn't find any big anomalies buried. It was just fill material, and pretty clean fill material. Actually, a lot of it, when we were actually doing the physical borings and pulling it out, looked like it was just brownstone quarrying waste material that was moved from another location into this one to fill it.
So you think it's like cuttings and slabs?
Yes, exactly.
Whatever worked off. But whatever, is it compacted well, or do you think it's like...
No, it's pretty good.
Good?
Yeah. And a lot of times, when we go out to do a Phase Two or Phase Three, if you did have a concept plan ready at the time, where you knew here and here we wanted to do buildings, we'd do the geotech for you at the same time.
Yeah, because of the fill material. Would that be possibly why you have a low, showing low contamination there, because the leachant went so easily through, you know? Which way does the groundwater go? Does it go out to the river?
Yeah.
From after, you know, 50 years of leaching and sloughing?
Good question. Groundwater's groundwater. We definitely got it 12, 15 feet below grade. This particular industrial use of petroleum, especially gasoline, you know, the number two heating oil, you're going to get floatables, which the wells make a nice coverage of the property. So the fact that we didn't have floating product told me that it wasn't escaping. You know, what we got in the soil, yeah, it's in the soil, but there was no big release that got on the groundwater and sat. 17 wells on those three properties, you know, that's, I have good confidence, not x-ray vision, but good confidence.
Anything else, Carl?
One more question on the PCBs that you found.
Yeah.
Could that possibly be on-site sometime that they used the property, that came in and said, I want to lease the property, this little area here to storage, and maybe put transformers or something like? Could it be that small of an incident where the transformers leaked, and now you have PCBs at one spot?
It could have been a number of things. Now, PCBs, paints, caux, transformer oil, waste oil. So what if a truck was sitting there, and the waste oil leak out of it dropped? Right. What we're concerned about is not that one spot per se, but what's around it? Is it, you know, the one spot we had, is it 20 feet to the next boring in every direction? Or is it bigger? So, you know, with what we have today for the data, we've limited it to an area 20 by 20 by 20. We want to find out if it was just that dock.
And if they have to remove it, you know, actually dig and remove off-site, the fill that they put in there, is it really, you know, couldn't they do it, or is there big chunks of brownstone in there? Can they dig it easy, or is it going to be expensive to...
So we've done a number of these. Sometimes when you're digging it out, if, you know, if there were a reason you had to dig it out to get to something deeper, you know, it's almost like quarrying again. You get a big rock like that, some contractor's going to want to get some money for that, you know?
Yeah.
I look for things like that to say, okay, we're going to reduce your bid by $10,000 if you find brownstone that you can then turn in and sell. You take anything off the site, we're charging you for it.
Okay. Yeah, good question, whatever.
Right.
Yeah, I understand.
Or maybe take the big pieces and set them aside. The town wants them for their development.
Right.
Fifty a ton.
You know, whatever.
That's what it is.
We don't charge ourselves, though.
Huh?
Not ours. It's not our land. It's actually privately owned. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. It sounds very...
It's promising. It's, you know, I always go in thinking the worst, hoping for the best. You know, this was on the side of the better side. Don't, I'm not saying it's clean, right? But it will be fully delineated, and there will be a number put on it.
Any other questions? I think we're all set, and we'll look forward to seeing you again soon.
Excellent. I hope I'm back real soon.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're welcome. Public comment? Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Does, do you have a packet, Laura?
We'll include your packet.
Apologize. We have our guest tonight. Michael Van Deventer is here from Mahoney, Sable &amp; Company. Tom, did you have anything you wanted to say previous? Welcome, Michael.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Van Deventer. I'm a partner at Mahoney, Sable. I'm happy to be here to communicate the results of your fiscal year 2015 audit. By now, you should have all received a copy of the financial statements.
Okay, distributed them.
As well as the federal and state single audit reports. I'm not going to go through those in any sort of detail this evening, but certainly, to the extent you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. If the questions aren't tonight, if you just want to filter those through Susan, I'd be happy to answer them as well. So what I do have is a presentation. The presentation will cover the scope of work, the reports that we issued, provide some brief financial highlights, and then it will include our required communications. Certainly ask any questions as we kind of go along, all right? In terms of the scope of work, really no change in the scope of work from prior years. We did perform an audit of the town's financial statements. In addition to that, we also performed a federal and state single audit based on the level of funding that was received by the town. In addition to that, we did also perform an agreed-upon procedures engagement on the EDO-1 end-of-school-year reports, which is required by the State of Connecticut Department of Education, all right? In connection with our work, we do issue a number of reports. The main report is the report on the financial statements themselves. We did issue an unmodified clean opinion on your financial statements. Our opinion does provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, and that they've been prepared in accordance with accounting standards. The opinion does cover multiple financial statement schedules within the financial statements. For the town, it covered your governmental activities, the Gildersleeve Wheeler Educational Trust, which is presented as a component unit, and then each of the town's major governmental funds, which was the general fund, your capital projects fund, your special assessment fund, the capital nonrecurring fund. And then we also provide an opinion on your aggregate remaining fund information, which is all of your other special revenue funds, your pension trust funds, and your agency funds, all right? So again, that was the best opinion that you can get in terms of an audit. In connection with the federal single audit, we issued a report on compliance and internal control at the federal ward level. Here we are actually expressing an opinion on your compliance over your major programs. You did receive $560,000 in federal financial assistance. The major program that was tested was the special education cluster. We did issue an unmodified clean opinion on your compliance, and we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over that program, all right? At the state level, we perform really the same reporting. The town received about $5.8 million in state financial assistance. Of that, about $1.1 million was considered non-exempt and subject to our testing. The major programs were the Open Choice Program, your Town Aid Road Grant, and the Small Town Economic Assistance Programs, really for your recreational complex, and then the Brownstone Extension. We did issue an unmodified clean opinion over compliance for each of those programs as well. And again, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your internal control over those programs, all right? So again, from an audit standpoint, very clean. Any questions as far as the reporting? Okay. Moving towards the financial statements themselves, I did want to make mention that the town was required to implement a new accounting standard this year. It changed the accountant for your pension plans. Ultimately, you're required to report the funded status of your pension plans in your government-wide financial statements. The implementation of that standard did result in a decrease in your beginning net position of approximately $7.2 million. So again, this is something that impacted all the municipalities across the state of Connecticut, and many of them saw similar impacts on their net position as a result of implementing the standard. In addition to that, it also increased some required disclosures. As you go through the financial statements, you will see a significant amount of disclosures relating to the pension plans themselves. And then the other interesting part of it was that the town was required to disclose its proportionate share of the net pension liability for the state teacher's retirement plan. So for the town, your portion is $22.7 million. The overall plan, the net pension liability is $10.1 billion.
We have a liability from the state?
It's not a cash liability, because the state is, or it's by laws required to make those contributions. But that is the portion that will be attributed to your employees.
So it has to be reported?
Yeah, so it does have to be reported. That's a benefit that they're receiving, and what the liability is associated with that benefit.
Does every town have to do this?
Yes. Yep.
Does it graduate it in based on the size of the towns, like some of these...
It's based on the number of employees and the demographic information, yeah. Yep. So the state had to do a lot of collection of data, and then NODR actually had to come in and audit that information so that we could rely on it and disclose it, all right?
Is part of this scenario, is part of this scenario because of the possibility of default? It would then automatically show us where everybody stands?
No, I think it's more geared towards that your employees are receiving a benefit, and so they just kind of want to identify, okay, if they didn't receive this benefit from the state of Connecticut, what type of liability or benefit would the town have to compensate its employees for?
Pretty much what I just said.
Is that what you said?
So it's basically...
Yeah, I thought you said something about default.
Correct. If the state chose or did not pay it...
Yeah.
Would it then fall back on us?
No. No, the state would have to pay it. They would have to fund it.
Correct.
So there's no situation where this would become a liability to the town. If it was, then you would be required to record it on your financial statements.
Okay.
Just disclosure. Good question.
I've got to ask you, what does, in a real fact, what does this $7.2 million change in position, what does that do for the town? What kind of, what kind of impact does that have on the town?
It doesn't really, it's not really going to have an impact on the town. This information was always disclosed in the past in your financial statements. It was just never actually recorded as a liability in your financial statements. So as far as the rating agencies and those things are concerned, they were aware of this beforehand.
So no negative impact?
No negative impact. It really, as long as you continue to fund your annual required contributions, this should not have an impact on any of your ratings or anything. All right? Moving to the next slide, I did include kind of a summary of the balance sheet for your government-wide financial statements. As you can see here, there are really no significant changes between your assets and liabilities. You will note that there was an increase in the deficit of your un... Uh, you will note that there was a, an increase in the deficit of your unrestricted net position. Again, that related to, uh, really the accounting for the net pension liabilities. But everything else, again, is, is pretty consistent with the prior year. Uh, in terms of your overall highlights on the government-wide basis, uh, your overall net position decreased by about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Uh, you did have capital asset additions of about two point four million, uh, which was offset by depreciation of approximately two point two million. Uh, so again, you continue to invest in the town's infrastructure. Um, a majority of those capital assets were acquired through a, a new capital lease arrangement of about one point three million. Um, as I mentioned before, you, you did have a net pension liability as of the end of the year of nine point five million, uh, which was up just about a million over the prior year. Um, your town and police plan were funded about sixty-six percent, uh, and your firefighters' plan is at sixteen percent. Um, you just recently started to fund the firefighters' plan, um, so again, I would expect that funding percentage to increase as you continue to contribute and also as you continue to, uh, invest those monies into, uh, into the market, all right? Uh, really, anything above eighty percent is considered a, a well-funded plan. Um, and so the, the, the goal would be to work towards achieving at least that funding percentage. And then the other, other item I was going to mention is you do have an unfunded other post-employment benefit of approximately two point three million. Uh, this is not reported as a liability on your financial statements. Uh, it is only disclosed at this point. Uh, the Gatsby did issue a new standard that's going to require you to also record this as a liability, uh, really following the pension standards. Um, the recommendation here is to, to look into that and maybe consider actually funding it, um, on an annual basis, much like you do your pension plans. Any questions as far as the OPEB?
Just on the, the big, the big picture, uh, won't try to lie down a little bit, which percentage of pension? Or are we, uh, so, approximately?
Um, I don't know that offhand, I'd have to look specifically, you know, at the financial statements. I think your, your annual pension contributions are around a million dollars, um, a year and, uh, right now, again, you're not, you're funding the other post-employment benefits on a pay-as-you-go basis.
Is there, I don't know if you, off the top of your head, but is there some sort of a percentage standard that we should be targeting, fifty percent, two-thirds, one-third, and is there something that we look at as a benchmark?
Yeah, I don't know that benchmark offhand, but that is something that I could look into and get back to you, I could provide that to Tom.
That last, uh, two point four million that you just discussed, what is, what is that for?
That's, uh, you're, uh, it mainly relates to the teachers, uh, when they retire, uh, they are allowed access to, uh, the coverage for the Board of Education, uh, in terms of their insurance. Uh, they do, uh, pay a hundred percent of that share, uh, but it does create what we call an implicit liability where, uh, by them staying on the plan, it's going to increase your overall rates. And so, uh, you know, all these calculations are actuarially determined, uh, but ultimately, they, they are receiving a benefit by being allowed to stay on those insurance plans. And so the, the whole, uh, approach to funding this would be to put money aside as the teachers are actually working to help offset those overall increases in rates when they retire.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, just, just so I understand, so by the teachers being on the plan, they're still paying for the plan, yet having more teachers on actually increases the cost of it?
Correct, because, because they're older, I mean, at that point in time, when they retire, their age.
Normally more on there is, is spread to the outside.
Correct, correct.
And is, is the majority of that two point three five million dollars driven by the teachers?
Yes, yeah. I think you do have some town employees as well, Tom.
Yeah, because, yeah, the majority of it is implicit value of anybody getting any type of, uh, well, I don't know, uh, insurance. And, uh, you know, the majority, uh, of the teachers, there are some, uh, public, um, works and we're going to do that as well.
All right. All right, moving on to your governmental fund financial statements, uh, you did have a combined ending fund balance of about seven point eight million. Uh, this includes the general fund as well as all of your capital projects and special revenue funds. Uh, the general fund had a fund balance of about five point seven million. Uh, your capital projects fund, uh, does have a deficit fund balance of about five hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, the special assessment fund has a fund balance of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, uh, capital non-recurring about one point one million, and then all of your other governmental funds had a fund balance of seven hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, when we look at these, one of the things we do look at is whether or not any funds have a unassigned deficit fund balance. Uh, you do continue to have a deficit in the capital projects, uh, the sewer operating fund and the water operating fund. Uh, the, the key thing is that you're aware of these deficits and you have been working to, uh, resolve the issues that, um, is resulting in those deficits. Uh, so again, we look to make sure that you have a plan in place to address these, all right? Any questions on the fund financial statements? Uh, moving on towards your budgetary highlights, again, your original budget contemplated use of fund balance of about three hundred thousand. Uh, you had no additional appropriations during the year. Uh, your actual net change in fund balance was an increase of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, which was a favorable budgetary variance of about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Uh, your revenues were under budget by about seven thousand and your expenditures were under budget by, uh, four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, and really, we didn't identify any budgetary compliance issues from that respect, all right? Any questions on the budget? Again, lots of information in the financial statements as you go through it and you do have questions, uh, I'd be happy to, uh, to respond and answer those. Um, the next slide goes over our required communications. These communications are really geared towards if we had issues during the course of the audit, uh, so I will run through these pretty quickly. Um, the first bullet here talks about auditors' responsibilities under our auditing standards. Uh, although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, all that information did come from, uh, Tom in his office. Um, our responsibility ultimately is to, uh, perform our audit and provide an opinion on the financial statements. Um, there was no changes in the, the scope of the audit and, uh, there was no issues in, so far as the timing of the audit. We did file the reports by the December thirty-first deadline. Uh, and then in terms of significant audit findings, um, again, really no issues here. Uh, you did implement that new accounting standards, uh, we didn't have any difficulties in performing the audits. Uh, there were actually no corrected misstatements. Uh, we do do a number of municipalities and I think this is the only town I have where we don't have an audit adjustment. Um, we did not have any uncorrected misstatements, uh, there were no disagreements with management. Uh, we did obtain a representation letter from management, there was nothing unusual in that in, in terms of us relying on information that's being provided by management. Um, there were no consultations with any other independent accountants. Uh, and again, uh, in terms of other audit findings or issues, um, really none. Um, during the course of the audit, we may have certain recommendations, uh, we just communicate those directly to, to Tom or management. Uh, none of those were deemed to be significant enough to, to report to, to the board.
I just have one question back on the sewer and water operating fund.
Yep.
You may or may not be aware of this, but when funding this, does that revenue need to come from sewer and water? Or is the town general fund a lot of the fund that account?
Right. Um, I think that's probably more of a question for, for the town attorney. Uh, Tom, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
I know you can hear us now.
Let me put you on the spot.
So, uh, yeah, currently, obviously, you know, we pay, um, through our current operations, uh, it has been a deficit position for many years. The general fund obviously does cover, uh, through a due-to-do-from situation, uh, that, that, um, last year, the Board of Selectmen made a significant, uh, decision and change to go through a, a long process to come up with multiple rate changes. Uh, those structures were, have been implemented all throughout this current fiscal year and, uh, we'll have to see how, um, you know, going through this year and through next year, how those really all shake out as to the, uh, the process flow. You know, you, the, the intent at one point is to try to stop the, is to, is to make the, uh, the funds become, uh, break even at a current position on the actual operations. That's kind of the initial goal. And once, then, then you can start drawing hopefully down and, and, you know, eliminating some of those deficits. If the, doesn't go that way, you know, then you're right, then there's a consideration whether the, those, those due-to-do-froms need to become advances, which is a little bit of a stronger term toward a, a due-to-do-from. So, uh, I think the main thing here is the continuation of, uh, going through what, what you did implement through the board, uh, go through and see how that shakes out this year, maybe continue it with next year, uh, as well as any of the, um, and then, uh, and look into what you're doing with your review of the tie-in bond proposals, um, related to the water funds. But I mean, I think, I think there's a lot of things going forward in this year that have meaning where it's a, we're hopefully striving toward a better position. Um, and if not, then, then, you know, the continual rate adjustment will be looked at again for another increase if, if it needs to be. Um, so I think that the, the intent of the board is to try to make progress. I think, we, we, we're trying to do that and, uh, um, you know, in the interim, yeah, the general fund does, uh, carry that as an inter-fund activity.
Now, does that need to be repaid at some point, in your opinion?
The intent is re, I mean, as it, as it's reported as an inter-fund, the intent is that it's a, yeah, it's a, going to get repaid, you know?
Okay.
Right now, looks very good. Um, just, so the water fund right now, what, townspeople pay for their water bills versus what it's costing? Is it running in a deficit, deficit position every year? And what's the amount that the deficit is? Is this just one year or is it cumulative right here?
That's cumulative, a des- deficit, that's showing.
Is it cumulative for one year?
No, it's cumulative for.
Total of the year.
Total, from inception of, of that fund.
What's a deficit per year? But what we charge versus what it costs us for the water and all the costs associated with that?
I think in terms of the, the rate hikes, you would kind of have to look at this, this year.
Was it the difference, or, I just, oh, I just pay the bill when it comes in, I just don't know. More curious, big picture, like, yeah, are we, are we behind a couple hundred grand a year? Is it close, is it?
Well, I mean, obviously, it depends on the year and it depends on the activity that occurs. Um, some years, if you have significant water main breaks, it's a bigger different deficit. So, uh, the, uh, in sewer, in water operating, it was about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar deficit in fiscal year fifteen.
Okay.
And then, uh, about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar deficit, uh, for fiscal year fifteen in sewer. Uh, sewers was an accumulation of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, and waters is, uh, four fifty-nine.
And Michael, is that, is that a typical thing for a town? I mean, do, do water and sewer budgets in other towns that you work with, are they typically in balance? Is, is it general funds generally cover that, like, how does it?
It, it really depends, town to town.
It is, okay.
Yeah, and again, that's where I go to from a legal perspective. Uh, I don't know the answer to that question, uh, in terms of giving an opinion of whether or not you can use general fund money to offset those costs. It is something to look into.
Okay.
To get an opinion. Uh, but there are some, obviously, water and sewer funds that are not self-sufficient and, and they do, uh, rely on, on the general fund.
Thank you.
Yep.
The rate increases that we put in last year, uh, have they brought us quote, closer to neutral? Are, are we still in deficit? Or, or do you anticipate next year's, when I put the full, I think it was fifteen percent, I'm, I'm trying to remember, and we broke it up into a smaller one now, to where we are now, are we on track to at least, uh, become, uh, neutral deficit neutral by next year?
Well, I mean, it, I mean, this is a tricky, it's a different question, I mean, is it really related to the audit of fiscal year fifteen?
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, in an attempt to try to answer that, uh, you know, you, you, obviously, the revenue should be increasing. Um, there, you, the, so the Board of Selectmen decided to do a staggered approach. So, obviously, the approach is staggered. So, based upon when those staggerings come in, there's still things that need to change. There's still rate structures that need to change within this fiscal year. So obviously, the complete picture of what we had anticipated would not be such as the anticipation of what I, when I did the analysis. So, we'll continue to do that and then next year, a similar picture. So, I mean, you, you, really, you see how the year comes out, there's more, there's more billings in this year.
When will you know that?
When the year gets concluded, I mean, you're continually, you, you, obviously, the rates are going up.
I know, but that's, I want to just kind of think, see where we're at.
But, but we, we do have that on the agenda, we can take a look at it.
Okay.
And well, as Tom said, we have to monitor and see the full effect, which will occur, I believe, by June thirtieth.
Right.
So that next payment, um, that, that people make, they make quarterly payments, as you know.
And then it's also one of our priorities in, in, so, why?
Correct.
Sure.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Tom.
And the, again, the key thing from an audit perspective, we want to make sure that you're aware of those deficits and that you're working on it, so.
We are working.
We are working.
Absolutely.
But that capital deficit, is that the school fund?
That's the school construction.
Um, for some of our newer members, maybe you could just recap what that was, Mike? Because I don't think that, we have two new members since last year, they may not realize why we're paying that down.
Okay, that's a deficit that really arose, I, I don't know when you actually did the school construction project, but that was a while back. Um, and I, I think the final numbers in terms of where you ended up on the, um, on the project, uh, you did not end up receiving additional grant monies from the state. Was it due to enrollment issues or?
That was part of it, but was also paying off the, the, uh, part of the bond early, you know, um, what's, what do they call?
Band?
Band, the bond anticipation.
The band, not bonding.
Was paid off in cash, um, or right away, Tom, is that what happened? It was before, Tom, it was the finance director.
Again, without standing with P, you like, this general fund money was ever bonded.
It should have been roll, it, it, I can't say it should have been, but it was anticipated that should have been rolled into the bond, but it wasn't.
Right.
So instead, we're paying it down every year. And then you'll see when we go through the budget season where there's a sizable amount that we put toward that to bring that down to zero eventually. I think it was about one million dollars, one point one million.
You're down to about five hundred something thousand.
Yeah, now we're down to about, we're about halfway.
Right, yeah. And the thought process there is if you fund it each year in terms of your budget, you're avoiding interest costs associated with the bond and, and those sorts of things, so.
And as Mike said, we have a plan and, and, uh.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good jobs, good job, Tom, thank you.
Well, this audit based on the, uh, these new Gatsby standards affect the town's credit rating?
No, no, I, I, again, the, this, the standard, um, the credit, um, agencies are, were aware of the standard. Um, all this information had always previously really been disclosed in the financial statements. Uh, really what it did for, um, everyday users of the, of the financial statements, the boards and, and the state themselves, it allows them to increase comparability, uh, amongst municipalities. Um, again, uh, one municipality may have a significant net pension liability where another municipality does not. Uh, you would, previously had to have gone into the notes and really dug in to find those numbers. Now it's just showing up right on the face of the financial statements. Uh, but again, as far as the credit, uh, agencies are concerned, they were always aware of the numbers. So it's not going to have a negative impact on you. And you would expect the, a town to have a deficit net position overall uh, because, uh, you are funding these long-term liabilities over time. Uh, so you, you have not accumulated those assets to pay those liabilities as of any given date. Uh, again, you're, you're going to be funding it over time.
We are establishing in this budget some dollars toward a fund that Tom indicated we needed to address.
So, again, if you were not making your annual required contributions, um, they would look at that and that could have a negative impact.
I think you were saying, I think, I think, I have to make, I mean, uh, the annual required, have we, are OPEB or have they made contributions? Turned OPEB to R.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's, that liability is, again, it's only about two point three million. Uh, and that liability is really based on a very low discount right now because you're not funding it. Uh, so as you actually begin to fund that, uh, you'll see that that liability is going to go down. Um, and your actual annual required contribution will actually go down as well, uh, once you start funding it, if you do do that.
Then at some point, can the town begin to draw that down to pay?
You can draw it down each year, yeah. The actuary will come up with an amount that would be related to the current period. Uh, and so that, most towns don't end up remitting the entire amount to the trust. They'll just do whatever is above and beyond, um, uh, the amount that.
Actually, those post-employment benefits, we don't really pay for them.
Right.
Because the employee is paying what's required. It's more of a benefit to them that's recorded, so that, that gets a little confusing.
It does get a little confusing, the actuary might be able to explain it a little bit better. Um, though, again, the whole idea behind establishing a trust was, be that you can take money. Um, though, again, the whole idea behind establishing a trust was, be that you can take money, contribute to it, um, invest it in the market, have other revenue sources to help offset your future costs associated with insurance.
And how do you, how do you use that?
Each year, the actuary will come up with an amount that you could take out of the trust to offset your costs. Yeah, so as you, as you go on through time and those insurance costs increase, you're gonna be able to take out more out of the trust to offset your, offset your costs.
How long do the post-employment benefits go for?
How long are you gonna live, I suppose?
Yeah.
It's from.
Like, um, within our contract, it's not in all the contracts anymore, it was, but you may recall, as we've talked about negotiations, it's not in the non-union, it's not in the, uh, MEY, it's not in the library. It is still in police and it's still in public works, correct, Tom?
Mm-hmm.
And teachers. And then other, other unions that we don't have negotiating over, which would be within the schools, and I'm, I'm not sure if they have post-employment benefits. Schools.
By any means, we have, well, maybe, uh, actuary do a review, there's no doubt, you know, it's all out of, like, this way, or, 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 like, you know, about, other year, we didn't, uh, 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 actuary. There's been utilized, so, for schools, the purpose of this, you know, audit, as well as to, hopefully, have low activity and, and eventual, and all we hope, so. Sorry, that, I think, you, 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 you started with, pretty trust, it was a true, it was a true, it was in the trust, but let it sit. I would say that some money, we need the money, we get back, but we're all intended to put money in the trust to offset the liability, so that, uh, you don't have a gap, because you know, there's your, your liability, there's, keep it all, there's your assets to offset the liability. And if it grows at some pretty higher than four percent, then it lowers the liability more, so. Right now, with no assets, they say that you're, they're funding it, they're for zero, therefore, it's a liability.
So, if you are considering funding it, you may wanna check with the actuary and tell them that you're gonna, you know, consider funding it, how, how would that impact the annual required contribution? And ultimately, the liability that's being recorded, yeah?
Congratulations, Tom, on your good financial management for our town, and thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike, for all of your work.
Thank you. And I will forward some benchmarking information regarding the question to Tom.
Thank you. The next item is appointment of auditor, and, um, we have to do this every year for, uh, according to the state that we will be auditing our accounts. And you do have in front of you a resolution pursuant to section four oh seven of our charter. Board of Selectmen hereby appoints the firm of Mahoney Sable and Company of one eighty Glastonbury Boulevard, Suite four hundred Glastonbury, to audit the books and records for town for the fiscal period July one fifteen through June thirty sixteen. And I wanted to point out to you that, uh, before we discuss the resolution, um, that in terms of the firm, which is the third firm in the last several years, um, we started, I think, when I was first here, it was, I'm not gonna remember what the name was at that time.
CCR.
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 So, soon I forget. Um, then Grant Thornton.
Grant Thornton, fire CCR.
Yep, and now Mahoney Sable.
Grant Thornton.
And, um, we, we are asking that we continue their contract, um, it's a five-year contract, but every year, either party can break that. So, what we try to do is work with Mahoney Sable and Tom and, um, the company has negotiated the fees as follows. Um, over the past three years, the town has experienced minimal increases in our fees from forty-one thousand per year in twenty thirteen to forty-one thousand five hundred in the current fiscal year twenty fifteen that we just completed. We've been able to maintain these fees due to the town's books and records being, quote, audit-ready, cooperation from our finance department and the town's personnel, and the fact that we did not experience any unexpected circumstances during the audits. With this in mind, Mahoney Sable would like to provide the following fee proposal for consideration for the board of selectmen. For fiscal year twenty sixteen, which is the proposal in front of you, a fee of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, which would be a two thousand dollar or four point eight percent reduction from the current fiscal year twenty fifteen audit fee, which is forty-one thousand five hundred dollars. This discount would be provided as a courtesy to the town for continuing services. For fiscal year seventeen, a fee of forty thousand dollars. For fiscal year eighteen, a fee of forty thousand five hundred dollars. For fiscal year twenty nineteen, a fee of forty-one thousand dollars. And for fiscal year twenty twenty, a fee of forty-one thousand five hundred, which may sound familiar because that's the fee that you're paying this year. So, I want to, um, compliment our finance department in terms of your negotiating skills on this matter, and I'll entertain a motion to move the resolution as presented.
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike, and I'll open it up for discussion.
I will, I'll change, since I used to.
Thank you. I know, that's consistent with other years.
How many hours were spent this year on the audit?
Uh, I'd have to go back and actually look at the number of hours, um, if the town decides, probably, uh, between three hundred and two hundred hours in total. Typically, we look to, to get a blended rate of realization on the, about a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, which actually significantly below what an hourly rate would be for, um, non-governmental organizations.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, perhaps. Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening, Mike, and thanks for coming tonight. Um, number nine is, uh, a tr- traditional, we do this every year, um, which is a, uh, resolution for the Emergency Management Performance Grant for fiscal year twenty fifteen, and I believe it is in your packets, um, yellow. And this is something we apply for every year, it's a matching grant, and, um, it's approximately four thousand dollars. It's not a very large grant, but it helps in terms of our emergency, emergency management. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
There's no motion.
Does that call?
Yeah.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. We'll waive the reading, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries. The monthly budget report is in your packets, and, um, we did spend a fair amount of time talking about monies. I think, Carl, if you, if you look for the water sewer, it should be in your.
Yeah, I think they put it in there.
Fortunately, we haven't had a lot of snow, so things are going better in that area, I know that. Snow removal is at thirty-five percent.
Yeah, it's great.
So, there's thirty-five thousand left in there. Most accounts look okay, I'd say. So, there's any questions? On page twenty-six starts the sewer fund. And this would be expenditures only.
Susan, are, page twenty-six, uh, can you make sure that the Water and Sewer Commission gets a copy of that, uh, that's what we prefer meeting next week?
Yes, I think Tom was preparing that.
Okay, because I know they always ask for that.
Sure.
How many employees come out of that, on the sewer fund?
There are three employees in the sewer department. And there are two, there are three funded in the water fund, but only two are filled. It was two, three budgeted, I should say, but there's only two that are.
Such you know.
The revenues, um, for the town, at least in my report, are toward the back.
Mm-hmm.
And revenues expected are, um, we expected one million, one point four seven million, in round numbers, and we're at, uh, year-to-date revenue six hundred seventy-two point two, uh, thousand. Do you see that, Carl, on, on the very last page?
Last page.
And the water fund is expected one point three nine one million, and we're at one million, one point oh eighteen. Okay, I would invite you to hold on to these because we will be starting our budget, and these are helpful when we're going through the budget, if you have questions in terms of use of various line items, so, wanted to give this to you tonight, and we'll certainly digest it some more during the budget season.
Susan, can we, uh, also, uh, I've got an update, maybe, in the future, next time, in terms of, uh, um, collection of, uh, house, we, I think, we discussed, uh, something else last year.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I hear.
Yeah, the, uh, the Lincoln accounts, um, and our efforts to make the more effective way, so we'll, we'll update on that to see if that's on track or.
We did, I believe, this year, you know, the years blend together, um, but there was a recent, um, tax sale. So, uh, so we will look into, um, the Lincoln's, please.
To see if that's, yeah.
Yes.
On track.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, if you're ready, we'll move on to number eleven, and I wanted to, um, revisit because, um, if a contract is agreed to and then it changes, I bring it back to you so that you'll know, don't want you to not see. This is the one that you approved for the ICE grant recently. And in reviewing it with the state of Connecticut,
That's right.
The numbers are reduced. So, you approved a number which will actually end up being lower. Um, as Rick Kelsey pointed out to me, we will be lowering the amount of our contribution as well. Think he had tried to put, um, a figure into these, into these, um, equipment amounts that would be a little bit of a cushion, but at this point, we'll have to, to our best adhere to these numbers. You can take a minute to compare the numbers. Tom, we're going over the equipment ICE grant right now. Now, the dollars have been reduced, um, from what we had agreed to last time. And is that because the estimates, Tom, were not accepted by the state?
Is there a, either?
Yes. I have the items here.
We, I believe, uh, Tom, I, I, yeah, hope, yes, we usually put together the, uh, the packet, we increase it based upon anticipation that, uh, you know, pricing always goes up over time period. Um, it's not necessarily, I'll, you know, like, after that project, so, uh, then, uh, we went back and we got updated pricing and, uh, provided that to them, and I believe this is the package that you're at now, is the, I just added needed updated pricing. Uh, it probably wasn't as high as we initially did, uh, with our estimate plus a factor.
So, the plus factors.
The plus factor, we, 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 we want a specific, just remember, based on a pool, it's in a whole, a period of time.
So, I wanted to bring it back to you for your consideration and approval of this document, not the one that was previous.
The grant amounts changed.
Yes. To reflect the actual numbers.
The actual numbers.
What's our contribution changed to?
Our contribution is reduced slightly.
By?
By.
By, I, I believe I have the numbers here, let's see if I have them. There, with, what if I, I was here.
Are you looking for that, Susan, to ask a question?
Sure.
So, a John Deere is actually a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's what it's gonna cost, as opposed to a hundred and forty-six?
That's what I've been told, yeah.
Why, why would we put a plus in there, if you will, hopefully?
Well, just like Wilson Capital, that transaction, you'd get authorization for a higher level than what it is because I think, uh, he was doing this grant back, whatever, three months ago. You come up and, uh, six, six months later, you're, the price has increased, or you missed something you need on it, or there wasn't extended warranty that you wanted, things of that nature, you, you try to put something with a factor on it so that you get more, that, you know, you make sure you get coverage, otherwise, you gotta come back, or you have to try, or you can't buy the play.
So, what would've happened in the other situation if, uh, if it's, if the grant amounts is one forty-six and you got it for one thirty, what happens?
You would, you just wouldn't, you wouldn't obtain.
Would get money.
And, and what about the other way, if, uh, it's one thirty, but you can't get it for one forty-six, it turns out, what, what happens to it? So, you're just not buying it.
You're not buying it, or you're.
Or you have to fill in it yourself?
Well, the town will pull up the initial money that you got, but have to go back and get more money from, first of all, the board of selectmen. So, the back will be somewhat, it'll be, instead of being sixty, twenty, twenty, it'll be fifty-five, something like that.
Um, the revised changes result in a reduction of about four thousand eight hundred dollars to each town. That's, 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 that's the information that I received on this. So, it's a reduction from the state and then, um, about forty-eight hundred to Cromwell and forty-eight hundred to Portland.
Is there any paragraph in here that deals with that contingency, the cost more? Or, or that, you just deal with it at the time? I didn't get a chance to read it.
My knowledge, what it was explaining to me, I wasn't really involved with this other, I mean, it's, when we, it's a million number, you're assuming that that's the revised number, that's the, that's the number you approved. Initially, like, the preliminary number, it looked like it was supposed to match, we went back and figured, and why we didn't get it, that if you raise that, it'll get back to your people and get what you want, and then, for when you would actually be buying it. And you know, I followed that trail somewhat, from what we're able to vendor, and then, they came back with that issue number, and these other numbers that we presented. You know, one of the things that was, uh, extended warranty that they were trying to report wasn't the initial, uh, package.
Anything else change in the documents, Susan, other than those dollar amounts?
No, it's the dollars amount, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So our liability on the new numbers will be about four grand, forty-eight hundred?
Less.
Less than that, huh?
Less.
So we don't have to pay for it, less. And they're, are, they're confident that we can obtain these equipment for these folks?
To the best of abilities, but you never know. We'll come back to you if there's any further changes.
Okay. This has to go through Cromwell, too?
Yes. I don't know if they're bringing it back to their council or not, since it's a less amount. Typically, when there's a less amount, it doesn't always come back. But because this is a new grant, I wanted to bring it back to you so you can follow what it is and how and what the rules are and, and have some familiarity, because I'd like to see us do this.
I do, too.
We'll give it a turn. Do you want to move the question, move the new res, move the new res?
Yes, sure.
A motion made by Carl to approve the, the new agreement, which I'll give you a copy of. Could you please pass that to our recording secretary?
Was the original liability?
Ben, you want to double check that that's the new one unsigned?
It is the new, the new dollar.
Okay, thank you.
Our original liability was, what, about forty, Susan?
I think it was about that.
And so we'll be acting to thirty-five, or you're supposed to.
Be lessened.
Yeah. Give or deny.
Right. And what, well, I don't know that there's a second. Is there a second?
Yes.
Yes, thanks, Mike. Any further questions or concerns, or? As I said, as we progress, we'll try to keep you up to date on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. You know, just a little side comment. When you go through trying to cooperate with other towns and you do it either in a health district, or you do it with a, um, buying equipment or a probate court, some years you do well, other years you don't do so well. These grants, sometimes they're gonna work. This is the first time we're trying this one, so we really want it to work because it means less cost for each town in terms of buying this equipment that you don't use every day, but that you do want to share. The other, um, grant that we're going to be looking at, I don't have it yet, is purchasing another senior van. And last year, we applied for it and we did not get it. And, uh, one of the critiques that they gave us was that we should be cooperating with another municipality. So Mary Flood has been meeting with Cromwell, and I've spoken to Tony Salvatore, the town manager. And we are interested in doing some type of a cooperative, uh, approach to purchasing one of these grant-funded vans. The other sort of layer is the re, different regions get a different allocation of monies. Some regions use up all their money and other regions leave it lying on the table. So I recently saw a First Selectman from one of the Havens, I think it's either East Haven or North Haven. And I said, you know, I understand last time you left some money, and would you be willing to give it to our region? So they're gonna look into that. Maybe we'll be lucky this year, I don't know. Just a little sidebar to keep you up to date on what we're, what we're all about here, I want to do. Okay, what is the next item? Is it appointments? I don't have any, no. Any appointments?
Nope.
All right, we'll move on to refunds. There are some, uh, dollars here that, that are a little bit larger than normal, and I believe they have to do with, um, some, the Scott incident here. I believe that has to do with the refinancing, I was told. And then Global Portland had to do with, um, some matters associated with inaccurate assessment.
Yeah, they double paid or something.
Um, I think the double payment was in the Scott name. But the Global Portland, I was told by the assessor that there was an error and that they didn't owe what they had paid. So this is a, a repayment. But a correction. So is there a mo, uh, someone be willing to go to CCAP Auto Lease?
Two hundred twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents to CCAP Auto Lease, L T D.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
One thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents to Hale Hill Farm LLC.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
Five thousand two hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents to Catherine D. and Joseph A. Scott.
Second. Second by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
These sums of three thousand six hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty cents and three thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and sixteen cents to Global Portland LLC.
Second. Second, also by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
And ninety dollars and thirty-eight cents to Eric Handel.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. The next is status reports. Um, I want to remind you that your budgets, because I had so many things to carry tonight, I wasn't able to bring all your budgets. But they are in the, um, office, outside, uh, the First Selectman's office. And, um, if you're unable to get them, I'll be sure to bring them to the next meeting so that we will have. Public comment. No public comment. Informal discussion? Brett?
Bring up one, one, I don't know if anybody else has heard of, uh, had this come up. But we talked about the roads and material on the roads, uh, passed. And, uh, I happened to live on the street where the roads, the roads, uh,
Yep.
was supposedly, uh, chipped, upgraded, uh, last year. And it looked pretty good for a while till winter came on. The stones are very loose. Point being that I find on my lawn, in quite a few lawns and my neighbors, an excessive number of stones. And we're not talking, you know, little chip stones. We're not talking, uh, a handful of stones. We're talking hundreds and thousands of stones that get thrown up. And so that creates a problem for two things. One is, what, what's the condition of the road when that's happening? How, how good is, you know, how good of an approach as far as longevity of the road, that's one. Two, we have all these stones now on lawns, which are, number, number one, it's a problem with cleanup. Number two is a safety hazard because when you're mowing the lawn and you have that many stones and the stone gets picked up and goes flying, it creates a real health, a pot, potential health hazard. So anyway, I just was wondering if anybody had heard anything else, uh, from anyone about that issue.
I know, I have a lot of stones in my farm, yeah.
Are these round?
Because we live near each other.
Are these round stones or sharp stones?
These are little chip stones.
Okay, so you're, you're.
Chip seal stones.
I was trying to figure out if it was coming from the sand on the roads or if it was coming from the road.
It's the chip seal.
Coming from the road.
Oh, the sharp seals.
That's the chip seal. And that, that hadn't happened before, I was thinking over the years. The process is better, just the way they do it, not, you know, the, whoever the contractor was in terms of time and order, et cetera. That was fine. But I'm looking at the road, which is now on lawns, and I'm saying, you know, what's the longevity of it, and number two, the safety hazard. Somebody ever gets hit in the eye with, uh, little stones from a lawnmower, you know, that.
I haven't received complaints in the office, um, and I don't think anyone has started mowing yet, but I'll probably get a few calls. Um, and it's something, we can always talk about at budget time. We are also gonna be talking about, um, potential maybe for bond authorization next November to include some work on our roads. And maybe that would be one of the items that we would look at. Any other formal discussion?
I have one quick one.
Yes.
Now with, uh, to, to the officers, our officers have Narcan in their, in their car.
We do that.
With the, with the arrest of, uh, you know, some people here in town with, with heroin and the bad problems, we, they're having in East Hampton with heroin. I believe that maybe our officers should have Narcan in their car and get, uh, certified or one of them or something to, to administer it. I don't even know what the process is.
Well, I can certainly, um, convey that, and I'll bring back to you how we will proceed.
Thank you.
I have nothing new on follow-up items, uh, but I would, um, like us to go into executive session for the purpose of, uh, land acquisition. And we will be joined by Mr. Carl Johnson for that. Moved by Brian, seconded by Kathy. We're gonna take, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And it is nine oh seven. We're gonna take a brief break. I'm sorry?
He goes to stand for a question.
Who has?
Oh, sorry, oh, forget.
So we're on recess. Cut the camera for a minute.